Let's try that again. So I will call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Six thirty-two, it is November fifteenth. I will ask you to join us in the Fledge of Allegia.
Fledge of Allegia to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the law of liberty and justice.
The next item on our agenda is the minutes from our November first regular meeting.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the November first meeting as written.
Second, motion by Stephen Wessington, seconded by Stephen Borris. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion heard. All right, that brings us to President to speak. We have a couple of folks in the room with us and several on Zoom. If you would like to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone else in the room would like to speak? They're both nodding no, thank you. So is there anyone online who would like to speak? If so, you should have the ability to unmute yourself and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Our correspondence, you will see a list of correspondence in your packet. And where they are filed, I will mention that the first item is regarding the portionment of the plan representation for Region nineteen. This came just prior to the meeting is when I was able to read it. So we're, this board, and I will not ask this to do it tonight as I just read it, is going to have to appoint some folks to work on a committee based on the 2020 census. Looks like the proportions in the Region nineteen towns are not equal to what would be considered constitutional. So we're going to take a look at that. So we expect that to be in our next meeting. But if you're interested in reading the letters, available. Any questions or comments on the correspondence? Seeing none. Move on to my report. I have no new updates for the Steve Grant. Let L.A. do their couple. It's on the agenda later. I'll speak about that. School Building Committee did not meet since our last meeting. They need to get this Wednesday. I have nothing new to report on the lots that were are the ARPA funding. That is another item that is on this agenda. We have a union negotiation meeting coming up, so hopefully we'll be able to move forward with that. We actually have a solidified date. COVID-19 vaccines, as of the last reporting date, which was November tenth, we are fifty-eight point seven seven percent fully vaccinated. So that's twenty-two more fully vaccinated individuals than our last meeting. So we are still less than our neighbor, our neighboring towns. Within our health district, the majority of towns are hovering closer to seventy or above vaccinated. We are well under that. But I will say our most vulnerable population, the sixty-five and over, are still being reported as a hundred percent vaccinated. And now, as you all might know, children five to eleven are not eligible. So we may see those numbers increase. COVID cases, we have eleven more positive cases in the last two weeks. So we have gone from being the unreportable level to now in the, we were in the yellow as of Thursday. So it's light uptick, but still far less than we saw this time last year. I'm still hopeful as people are increasingly getting vaccinated and are seeing more boosters out there. And we're telling you, hurts to lift the arm tonight. I had a booster today. So we will continue to monitor that and no, I don't anticipate any changes here. We're still keeping face masks in town buildings, but we never had a town law. And I anticipate that currently. Any comments, questions? Public Works. So Troy is with us.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, I'm trying. Something's wrong with my video. I seem to can't get it. So I'm just gonna have to go like this, I guess. All right, so the trash at the park. We've been doing a lot of pothole repair around town. We've graded some dirt roads. We changed the light bulbs in the common room where you guys are now. We installed some new plexiglass in the finance office. We've been blowing leaves off the edge of the road and cleaning catch basins off. We changed a basin top on Hancock Road. We picked up some debris on Schofield and Turnpike from the storms earlier. There was some gravel that got washed out. So we picked that up today. And mostly all the vehicles have been serviced. All the plows have been serviced and all the trucks are up and ready. So we're pretty much ready for any winter weather we have. So that's what we've been doing.
One of the things that I think is important to note is that we have three new vehicles on order. One replacing the four fifty, the Murrin truck, replacing the Public Works Director's vehicle and then a new plow truck, tractor. Those are the three.
Yes, yep.
Taking much longer, like everything else around the country than expected. So we still, we don't have a definitive date. The two trucks are waiting, we're still waiting for, I believe they're ready for the chip. That seems to be a full length up. So we're moving forward with the process of Donna sending the RFP out for leasing. And we will have to have a public hearing soon. We're working on things to get ready for a town meeting with that, so we can have everything ready when the trucks are ready. Originally, they said October, maybe November, and now we're into December, maybe January. So in the meantime, Troy has had to replace some things on the current vehicles he has because we don't know when the replacement will come. And so we need to have vehicles ready. So it means putting some unexpected expenditures into the vehicle. Keep an eye on how that's affecting his budget. And I mentioned again, Troy gave me an updated report. I don't know if it's in your packets on dollars spent out of this budget for tree work. We had originally fifty thousand dollars in his budget for trees. We are currently, he's overspent in that line item at sixty thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. As you know, between the ash trees and other hazardous trees and these are live storms, it really hit our budget hard. So there are many things within his budget. We had additional dollars are going to not be able to and I have big concern, I know Troy does as well, about what the season will look like after winter entries. So we already had this discussion here. We took the discussion to the Board of Finance, as they're aware, but we may have to ask for a significant amount of money in addition to what's already been appropriated in this budget. So we will keep our eyes out if the ash trees aren't getting any better and every time we have a storm. Troy, we do not have any tree damage from this weekend's.
We actually had one on Wilderness Way, but it was a homeowner's tree and they cleaned it all up. So other than that, we had no, no damage.
We will keep an eye out for that. The next item is executive session. So I will make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss pending litigation pertaining to negotiations and possible settlement of Cato Rock Properties Joint Venture LP and Cato Rock Properties of Connecticut, Inc. versus Town of Wellington, Connecticut and Town of Ashford, Connecticut pending in the Superior Court. Second, seconded by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll see you can keep the recording going. We're going to excuse ourselves and go to another room. Then we'll be back here. So if you're on the call, let's say hang tight. Your application for the session. I will move to add a resolution to approve a settlement and limited release agreement to the agenda.
Second motion.
Motion made, seconded by John. Any discussion? So this is a motion to add an agenda item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion. So I will move resolve that the Board of Select Persons approves the settlement and limited release agreement in the form presented and is substantially discussed at this meeting and authorizes the first select person to execute such agreement to resolve the litigation style Cato Rock Properties Joint Venture LP and Cato Rock Properties of Connecticut, Inc. versus Town of Wellington, Connecticut and Town of Ashford, Connecticut. Docket number TTD-CB-21-6023585-S, which is presently presiding in the Superior Court for the Judicial District of Talent at Rockville. Is there a second? Second, seconded by Liza. Any discussion?
Did you say presently presiding or presently pending?
Presently pending. I may have said presiding. Friendly amendment to that. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on this.
John.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Erica.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. New business. Item A is heart-safe community designation. I will share with you that over the last few years, Wellington County Number One Chief Alex Moore, and Alex is on the call with us. He's been working with the Selectmen's Office, with our schools, to acquire AED devices in all public buildings. Our schools, the library here at the Town Office Building. I believe at the Old Town Hall. Alex, is there one at the Old Town Hall? Maybe. There's also one portable that goes out to River Road Athletic Complex. We will bring that back in the winter. Alex, do we have one in the Old Town Hall?
Yes, there is one in the Old Town Hall as well.
He's also worked to train staff on how to use these devices and offering CPR training to the schools. As a result of Alex's hard work and the commitment from our community, we were recognized by DPH as a heart-safe community. So the letter we'll include in the minutes is on behalf of the Department, Connecticut Department of Public Health and the American Heart Association. Congratulations to your community for having met the requirements of a designated heart-safe community. This three-year designation effective September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one recognizes your community's continued commitment to provide improved cardiac response and care to the residents of your community utilizing the chain of survival of early nine-one-one access, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, defibrillation and advanced care. We commend you on your efforts to continue to save lives and improve the health of your community. This was signed by Heather Aaron, MPH Deputy Commissioner of Public Health. And with that, we also received a very nice certificate designating us. So we'll keep this up. And we received large signs to go out on roads and buildings and then smaller signs. So you can see the heart-stayed community. There's one that says heart-stayed campus. So Phil is going to put that, I believe, in front of all school. And so we're working to find areas in town. As you're coming into Wellington, it will let people know that we are a heart-stayed community. So I want to thank Chief Moore for all of his work and his commitment to the self health and well-being of anyone, not just living in Wellington, but also visiting us. So thank you, Chief Moore. Anything you want to share?
No, other than thank you to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the Board of Ed for all the help getting the project off the ground. It was a lot of work, but I'm glad it's finally paying off.
They, you know, the heavy lifting was definitely about Chief Moore. We supported him in adding this to our budget and then advocating it to the Board of Finance that he certainly deserves the credit. So just started to see the signs go up over town as we get approval on some of our steep roads. So that brings us to item B, an easement for the Old Town Hall Septic System. So that's the Steve Grant we were awarded last year. And while DPH is still moving rather slow, we're trying to push them along. Everyone across the state is feeling a little bit frustrated with the process. What we do need is a, an easement from one piece of town property to the other piece of town, town property. So we've had our attorney's draft. An easement, it needs to go approval from this board, then on to the town meeting. Also, we need a need to for approval from PDC. That's on their agenda tomorrow night. So I'll be talking with them. And again, although those properties belong to the town, they're technically an encumbrance of town property, even though it's for the benefit of another town property. So I will make a motion. So I'm going to move to accept the Septic System easement and maintenance agreement as written to be approved at town meeting. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Working off of this here.
We are. Well, I altered this because it needs to go to town meeting for approval.
Okay.
So that's why you see the suggested motion. And I, you know, change it to send a proposed.
Also says address of forty old farm.
It does, because that's the address listed because the town is the owner. If it has the owner, it's forty old farm thrower. But it would go from us then to town meeting. So that's why my motion sends it to town meeting for approval. Any other discussion?
And we'll do an official call for the town meeting at later date.
Yes. Yes. So this is one item. We may have a couple others. I know we have to have a public hearing for the Public Works vehicles. So we're trying to get as many things we can into one town meeting. Seeing no other discussion, I will call for a vote.
John.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Erica.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that brings us to ordinance to establish an American Rescue Plan Act Commission. So we formed an ad hoc committee. And I proposed to that committee at our last meeting that we consider an ordinance. I will tell you that the ordinance you have drafted before you is modeled from the Town of Stafford. It would officially establish a commission that's for, to manage the disbursement of the funds under the act, working in the best interest of the community. It includes multiple individuals, a much larger space. And this would, the ordinance would then allow this commission to hear a project, determine the project and approve the project without going back to town meeting. So the town meeting, a legislative body, would then, would then authorize a commission organized to do so. I think it's a more efficient manner for dispensing those dollars. So and you'll see in this draft proposing that the makeup of this commission is the first selectman, the current town clerk, the emergency management director, the current business manager, director of public works, the current human services director, our zoning agent, a member of the Parks and Rec Commission, a member of the Board of Finance and a member of the public health community. That puts multiple players at the table. They would administer the grant, develop a multi-year spending plan, facilitate, encourage and solicit input from the community and educate through different presentations on how the funds will be used.
So there isn't a person from economic development on it. So is this just like, is this the logistical aspect of the grant rather than like the conceptual piece of determining how these funds are all going to be allocated?
So this, this commission would then determine how they were allocated. So someone would present to them. And our zoning agent works with PDC very closely. And I think that represents, I know when we talked about our ad hoc committee, John, you had wanted someone from PDC and their staff member. And Mike fills that role as someone who has great writing experiences. We don't have a grant writer here in Wellington. As well as EDC, really, he represents all of our land use agencies. And so and he has a vast knowledge. And we've already received some feedback from EDC as well. And I think their issues aligned with this board in making sure we gave back to small businesses. And so that, I believe, the correct zoning agent would work in behalf of EDC as well. We can add a member of EDC if we felt that was necessary.
We have to designate somebody. We've jumped into the corner throughout the whole meeting. Um, yeah, I mean, so these are I guess I do feel like there is something missing from like community representation, like from the businesses themselves. I mean, I know the zoning agent works with the businesses, but I feel like I, in addition to individual and family impacts, I think the COVID impact on the small business community has been pretty severe. And I would want to sort of, I want to make sure that we have enough representation from that community.
Yes.
Because I think that's where there's a lot of attention that needs to go to the small businesses in this community.
So how about if we add K, a member or designate of the Economic Development Commission?
I would very much be prepared with that.
And I, and I say member or designate in the event the membership of EDC designates a staff member in that department. And then then report it back to them. And that gives them the opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay. This is something we do not have to act on tonight, but if we do, it would go to town meeting for further discussion where we would give a presentation on the ARPA fund. So people know exactly what we were looking at and an understanding of this. I will tell you that the group that met was in favor and Mike is not on this meeting, but Jenny, I think the services director is and could speak to it if she would like, that we were in favor of this larger voice making these broader decisions. And I think it's important to put that, that down.
And I think in the beginning, the ad hoc committee was for some rapid response. But I don't think it was ever intended to be the only, you know, so.
And I think, I'm sorry.
No, I, I like this. And I just, yeah. Hoping it's, I just wanted to make sure it represented.
The only one it does not include specifically is someone from the education side of the fence. They did have some of their own dollars, but that does not preclude us from including educational buildings if it need be into the ARPA plan, if that's what the community, after we have some outreach, determined that they wanted. So I know different towns, everybody's doing a little something different depending on how much money they got. But it doesn't preclude us that I didn't necessarily think that we were looking specifically at education, but they will have a voice. As with anything, it needs to be public meetings, this commission. So our options tonight are to move forward with this to a town meeting or push it to another Board of Selectment meeting. And if so, it's like the town meeting that we're planning to hold, this probably, this would not.
Well, we don't have a town meeting planned right now.
No, but I anticipate on our next, the next quarter, so we anticipate December first, we would be setting a date during December for one. So this could be included in that town meeting.
Could be.
And I will attempt a motion or a new, I mean, how you feel. I move to send the proposed ordinance with the change to town meeting for approval. Second, seconded by Liza. Any discussion? Although, oh, I'll throw a vote.
John.
Aye.
Liza.
Aye.
Erica.
Aye.
There it is. Better look for a more broad, a more broad discussion with the public. All right, moving on to appointments. And they are plenty. This is not trending. I will start by moving to reappoint Jenny Arpin as the agent for the elderly for the Town of Wellington, effective December first, twenty twenty-one, expiring December first, twenty twenty-three. Excellent. Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? Ms. Arpin is on the call. I will throw a stop if she would like to speak. We recently moved her office to the Senior Center. I think that has been a positive move for our senior community. I've heard lots of positive feedback there, that it's nice that for those at Wellington Woods or Button Hill who may not have the ability to get here easily, I can still ask.
Jenny? Can. Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for reappointing me once again. And I'm super excited to be at the Senior Center. Lots of warm welcomes and it's created a great ease of access for our senior residents to be able to access the services that my department offers. And I just wanted to let you know that today I noticed the new CIRC profile was out for the Town of Wellington, and that's got a lot of data and information. And just a little interesting bit of information is according to the twenty twenty-one CIRC profile, we have twenty percent of our residents are sixty and older. So that's a significant portion of residents that are eligible for joining the center. So come on down. We've got some good things happening. And just thank you again.
Thank you. Apologize if we look perplexed. It's because of volume that's from hearing it on the monitor to only here. Under. Yes. Jenny, can you try speaking to us again?
Sure. Um, hello? Um, hello?
That's unfortunate. Or she didn't say anything, or she didn't say, we don't know.
Is it, is it working?
You say the system and see what. Try again, Jenny.
Okay.
We're speaking to Detroit. Thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion unanimous. I will move to reappoint Carol Jordan as a regular member of the Conservation Commission, effective December sixteenth, twenty twenty one, expiring December fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Seconded by John, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And move to reappoint Jackie Huleg, Huleg, as a regular member of the Conservation Commission, effective December sixteenth, twenty twenty one, expiring December fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Second, second of Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion unanimous. I'll move to reappoint Mark Drabney as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission, effective December second, twenty twenty one, expiring December fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Seconded by John, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. I move to reappoint William Rankin as a regular member of Economic Development Commission, effective November twenty first, twenty twenty one, expiring November twentieth, twenty twenty six. Second, second of Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We have two openings on CIP and in your packet you receive communications from two individuals. So I will move to appoint Melissa McKinnon as a regular member of the Wellington Capital Improvement Program Committee, effective December second, twenty twenty one, expiring December first, twenty twenty four. One second. Second of Liza, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Lastly, I move to appoint Sarah Rees as a regular member of the Wellington Capital Improvement Program Committee, effective December second, twenty twenty one, expiring December first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Second of my John, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank all of these individuals who, once again, have answered the call to serve on their respective boards and commissions. And we appreciate all of the support. Great. Old business. I have nothing on the agenda for old business either of you. No, all right. Brings us to present to speak, if there's anyone in the room who would like to speak? Then once again, have decided to remain silent. There's nothing here with us, in name only, if you are on the call and would like to speak. If you want to mute yourself, identify yourself for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Listen to us.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a minute to thank John for his many years of involvement in Wellington politics. And as a former selectman once said to me, and I think John needs to be aware of this, there is life after politics. With that, John, I wish you well.
Favor of.
Thank you. And Ms. Goodell.
Hi, just wanted to say thank you to Jenny Arpin for her work on the food drive over the weekend. It was an absolute sight to behold, all of the food coming in, all of the volunteers that helped out. And it was a really cool event and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, thank you and your family for volunteering with that. We appreciate. Anything else, Ms. Chief Moore, can I see your hand raised?
I just wanted to say thank you to Selectman Blessington as well for all of his years and his support for the emergency services.
Anyone else present to speak? And you do not have to be on camera, do not feel subtle or clung. Once, I do have several items for good and well there. And I'll start with our mobile food chair will be here at the Town Office. No, I don't know, Jenny, will mobile food chair be here next week?
Next week, yes, not this week.
Okay, the day before Thanksgiving, so on the twenty fourth, eleven to eleven thirty, will be here at the Town Office Building. As always, I ask you if you can to support our small businesses and restaurants. As Ms. Goodell mentioned, the, there are two simultaneous events on Saturday here. The turkey drive as well as the Boy Scouts annual food drive, scouting for food drive. So I want to thank everyone who donated food, turkeys, our families that have a little bit more of a need this year. I know we'll be very appreciative of it. And Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong, it was five thousand five hundred pieces?
So far, yes.
So it's not too late to donate something. If you're still, I can bring that here to the Town Office Building when we're open or there's a blue box for donations outside our office. So thank you to Jenny and all of her volunteers. She had a tremendous volunteer support here on Saturday. It was a sight to behold. And that's why we're downstairs, back in our usual place, because our new meeting area is full of food right now. So I also had the pleasure on Saturday of attending Veterans Day event. So I want to thank Commander Edogata and the VFW Post nine thirty eight for a wonderful event. The Hall School Band played. We were able to really honor our veterans, past and present, here in Wellington. So it's important for us always to honor those who served our country. Those who live in freedom will always be grateful to those who help preserve it. And to that, I say to Selectman Blessington, thank you for your service there. CIP requests are forthcoming. All budget writers will be sent out the forms and instructions soon, so get ready. Budget season's happening. Get your requests ready. On a very positive note, the annual tree lighting is back. Alan Humphrey, our new Parks and Rec Director, is gearing up for this event. He's once again going to partner with Human Services to decorate and donate trees to families in need. It will be held on Friday, December tenth at seven PM on the Green, the old town hall. And so I believe he still had a couple of trees to be sponsored and decorated. So if you're interested, reach out to Parks and Rec. I want to congratulate all the newly elected members of our boards and commissions. On behalf of all, I want to thank you for your commitment to serve the people of Wellington. Thank you to our registered voters for their hard work. We had a turnout of forty four point nine nine percent for municipal election. That might be close to a record here. So we had about a six percent increase in voter turnout. So certainly no matter how anyone votes, the fact that you do take the opportunity to vote is really important. I want to welcome, he's not here with us, but our new selectman Jim Ullit will be joining us at our next meeting. And John, I will give you the last word, but once again, I want to thank you for your service to the Board of Selectmen in Wellington.
Thank you, it's been very interesting and enjoyable. And I think now, like Rob said, it might be like that to politics after all. I think I've put in enough time. Was it Chief Joseph said, when something stands, I will fight no more forever. Well, I don't know how he felt.
All right, thank you. And with that, I will move to adjourn at seven eleven.
Second.
Second of, unamiable matter, all those in favor? Aye.